Okay, I am gonna call us to order at 6:01 PM. And I will also start public comments. As usual, if anybody has anything, raise a hand. Um. Okay, I'll let you guys finish signing and we can...
Okay, I'm good.
If...
See Paul.
We'll go through minutes.
Minutes, I actually did not have any comments or corrections, other than chuckling at Ellen's board. You said, "complete," or what was it?
It's fixed.
It's fixed. That made me chuckle.
Roof update. It's fixed.
Ms. Ryska announced, "It's fixed." Exclamation mark.
Actually, I did have a few.
Did you have a few?
I didn't know if you had any.
I didn't, no. That doesn't mean I didn't miss anything.
Right, same.
I only had like a couple. Everything else was fine.
Okay.
Under public input, instead of saying Newfield's athletic association placed any signage outside, I put "on their property." Because outside could have meant anywhere.
On, yeah, on, yeah.
Yep, and then as they own the fields and playground, I wanted to clarify that.
Should we call it, isn't it NYA, like actually call it, what it's really called?
NYAA.
Newfields Youth.
Yeah, it's youth.
Just a...
Yeah, that's true. We can probably make that change to NYAA.
And say, um... The fields.
And playground. And then, um, under new business, I want to just strike, Ms. Christmas stated that they are continuing and just say want to inform the public, because we hadn't done much at that point yet. And then, so under new business, section eight.
Yep.
Ms. Christmas stated that they are continuing to. We haven't really done anything yet at that point.
We have. We have since the end of last year, yes.
Okay, great.
We posted a few times and we've also said it at almost every board meeting.
Okay, perfect.
So, yeah, we have. I would definitely...
And then, I just wanted your feedback on this one, where it says it's fixed. And then we say it's, "we're monitoring it." I didn't know if we should strike the nice comment, because we're not confirmed that it's kind of fixed yet. We're still making sure that it is fixed. The smell, the roof is fixed. But we don't know if the smell is fixed. But I'm happy to leave it, but I wanted to at least kind of have a quick chat about that one.
Ellen, do you remember if you actually said that for you?
Yes, she did.
I think I did say that, because it's accurate, that we did fix the roof.
We did fix the roof.
We fixed the roof.
Do you feel comfortable leaving it in there?
Yeah.
I think it's fine.
I agree.
I mean, I think we're monitoring the smell. I mean, we made the fix. We did what we had ordered on to.
That's fine. I just wanted to just kind of, just make sure that we were okay with that. And that's all I had. Just a quick small thing. That'll be good.
Let's give Molly back her tree.
Right.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You should sing that.
Hi. Okay. Wow, nobody should watch this recording. I'm punchy tonight, so, sorry. Okay, so, um, business, manifest and financials.
Okay, great. Thank you for just signing the manifest. Included in your board pack is the first year financial. You don't have a summary page, because the summary page is compared to the prior month, so this is the first month, so therefore, we didn't have a summary page in. So just a few items to note. The roof money is in here, so in order for us to do the purchase order, we had to do it to a line. And so, for this to get into your board pack, we have to send it out one week in advance, which then we have to prepare a few days before that. So we hadn't received the check yet. They were also in the process of approving it on the Newfield side, so. That, they did email me to say it was put in the mail. I do have to check with their account to see if it was actually received yet, but I believe it's in transit. So that's why I did put a little three asterisks next to where you'll see the money coming out.
Right, and that's on my, ooh, page on page two?
It's on page two, where the stars are.
Okay.
Um, and so, just two items to note here. We saw a tremendous amount of people track across every district in SAU 16 that we weren't expecting, so that's why you'll see some of the teacher lines are a little bit over budget, because of unanticipated track changes.
Yeah, I noticed something. It was kind of, okay.
Yeah, and that's happening across every district in SAU 16.
Okay, is that something that we, I'm sorry?
What do you mean, "track"?
So Ellen probably did better job.
Sorry.
They move up, like you can get more credits or...
Oh, track in their salary.
Track changes within their salary, yes, from taking courses.
Additional courses.
I was not familiar with that term. Got it.
And then also, you'll see there's a switch just because of who we budgeted for versus regular ed versus special ed. So one looks over, one looks under, but, yeah. So again, we're building a lot of the encumbrances, so we had as much built, but again, this had to be prepared almost two weeks ago, so we're still still in the early stages of the school year, so building those things. That's so far so good.
I have a question about the special ed private tuition. It doesn't look like we budgeted for that, and something is hitting. Is that, but I also see that the public line hasn't, so I didn't know if they were, we were maybe anticipating public, you know, once private, or if there was something...
So I don't know, Suzy, if you...
Was it just unanticipated?
What page are you on again?
Yeah, the first page.
Quarter of the way down.
First page. So it looks like the tuition public, there's a 5,200 remaining, but the tuition private is 37 overspent?
Thirty-seven overspent. So I just, I didn't know if maybe it was like a flip-flop, or, I mean, I know things come up, but...
Yes, I think this had to do with tuition-related, you know, student-specific tuition that was unexpected to cover student needs.
Okay, so, um, because this is only the first
Right.
month into school, are we anticipating that to be?
So that's why we encumber, whenever we encumber, we try to encumber for the full year.
The full, okay, that was my question.
So what you see under the YTD, that's year-to-date.
Okay.
Those are actuals.
Okay. And then the encumber.
And then the encumbrance is the rest of the year.
It's the rest of the year.
You'll see like teacher salaries on the first line. We encumber the full year, so the instruction I always give to all schools is, encumber as much, like the famous thing is snow plowing.
Yeah.
Encumber your full amount of snow plowing, and then as the year goes, we can adjust it.
Okay.
So if we have a random winter with zero snow, we'll start dropping things down. And I, every time, without fail, we drop it, we get a major snowstorm, but we try to do things for the full year.
I like snow. Can we drop? No, I'm just kidding. Okay, no, that's fine. I just want to, like, things like that special ed and things like that, that we have a trust fund for, I always ask the question, because it's something that and remind me again, if come the end of the year, we are tight on anything, can we can we pull at that point to cover some of this cost? Or do you have to do it as it happens?
Nope, you can do it after. So we actually have to expend the money first, so just like your roof. We have to expend the money first, make the motion in the board meeting, and then I take the motion, the receipts, and then I send that over to the town, and then they cut us the check.
Okay. Cool. That's, I just wanted to make sure. Those are the ones that we have savings for. I like to...
Yeah, you can always access the trust as long as it's something that was unanticipated.
Right.
As long as it's, and it doesn't necessarily have to be unanticipated, but it has to be meet the speed of the trust, so like, you couldn't ask for a special education need out of the technology trust.
Right, exactly, okay.
Unless it was technology.
Okay.
That is, I didn't know about the encumbrance, the intention to encumber for the whole year intentionally. So is that generally a rule, a rule of thumb that you practice?
Yes, so that's the whole purpose of encumbrance, so we really want to see the budget balance was available to spend. So what is in the far-right column, the available balance, that should be what Suzy knows she can enter into agreements for.
Got it. And again, that's just your anticipated encumbrance for that particular year.
Correct. Yeah, so we always encumber, to the best of our knowledge, for the full year. Things come up all the time, but when things come up, the guidance is always given, please encumber for the whole year, so we know what to do.
Do you have, in, I can't, sorry, I can't remember, in the regular board pack, do you normally have the balances for the trust funds in here?
We usually do it on my summary pages, since it's month one, I didn't do that.
Right.
However, I do pop it up on the screen. So, um, so...
Gives Jenny ass this game before we...
Jenny ass this game. So I believe, and this is, I had to do a little bit of quick math here, because we had gotten some interest, and then also just factoring in some expenditures that we had made. So I believe the school building maintenance, because I was looking back at the roof invoice, I think that was 57.
Yeah.
Okay, so then I think the balance after that comes out will be 12,939. The special education, we hadn't had any changes, and we gained some interest, so that, I believe, is at 1,19878. The safety and security would be at, um, I think it's 42,196. And then, if you remember, we added that technology trust, so that would be the 10,000 that's going into that.
Okay.
Okay.
Awesome.
No interest yet?
No, we just, we just mailed the check for that, not recently.
Awesome.
And so, we will have those balances on the summary page going forward, which you'll see next.
Awesome. That's really the only reason I noticed it wasn't there, because I was like, wait, where's that? Okay, anything else? Manifest, financial?
Uh, no, the technology one actually might be 52 after we add the 10,000. I think I forgot to add the 10,000, so it's either 42 or 52.
Okay.
Sorry, anything else? Not really.
You mean the safety?
You mean safety.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yes, safety, safety and security. Suzy and I are working hard on her budget, so that you'll see the first drop of that in November. Other than that, set it up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Awesome. Committees. Uh, strategic planning committee.
We haven't met yet.
Okay. When are you meeting? Do you know?
Not until...
Not, it's like...
Not until like, like...
It was in the minutes.
Later this one. It's not until at least next, was it next month or December?
I think it's, I think it's November, okay.
October 24th.
Oh, October 24th.
It's in the calendar, but yeah, it's, I'll have something by next month, if there's anything to share.
Policy committee?
Our first meeting is on the 17th, which is in two weeks.
Okay.
I did also ask the question, I'm forgetting the exact question, oh, the cadence of what kinds of policies and which categories we'll be reviewing over the year, and Heather said that she will happily share that, once the plan, not in two weeks, is to sort of all agree on the cadence for this year.
Yeah, because I think, I guess, one of my feedbacks to the policy committee, and maybe you can bring this up, is one of the things is, especially during, specifically like January, December-January meetings, where it could be, there could be more on the agenda, because it's coming up into deliberation, deliberative sessions. If we could at all possibly spread out some of the policy stuff, so that's not so heavy, those months leading up to the deliberative session, just food for thought, because last year got a little long.
I remember.
In some of the, which is, it's fine, it's just if we have any say in like the, how we spread it out, those two months to get, especially once we start really digging into the budget and everything. That would be just kind of my
I think that's totally...
From prior year's experience.
I will say, I think Heather's intention is that there's going to be fewer to review this year, thankfully.
I figured.
And as a result, she actually did make the suggestion to meet every other month, although we haven't formally decided that yet.
Okay.
So we're going to decide that in two weeks, and if so, that does still, to your point, so we'll have our October 1 in two weeks, then we'll be bringing the policies forward to our November meeting. And then if we don't meet again to December, then that's going to be the January meeting, so.
Okay.
But I don't think it's firmly decided that we're going to meet every month, just yet.
Usually a light flashing on camera?
No? What'd you say?
Can you guys see the light flashing?
There's a red light.
The red light's on. You're good.
Red light's on.
It's flashing, but...
That's triple checking.
Superintendent Evaluation Committee, we met, we went over goals. And we are actually meeting again this Friday, and the goals are being presented at the joint board meeting, so it's on, kind of ongoing. They were still being finalized, but we had the first kind of go-round. Safety and security?
We meet on the 17th, so nothing to report yet.
Look at that.
Super fast.
If we want to go to the school's safety project while we have Molly here, and then she can exit, in case you have any questions about the timelines for
I can do that for a few things.
Bond hearing and whatnot?
I mean, I'm fine to do that if you guys, is that okay, Suzy, with your agenda?
Of course.
Okay, cool. Just wanted to make sure nobody has to run out. Yeah, so let's skip down to old business, the school's safety project. We did meet with the community and got lots of really great feedback. I think, well, my takeaway, and tell me if anybody heard this differently, I think, I think a lot of people in the town support the project, are just nervous about the price, as I think all of us are. But agree that something needs to be done. We had, we had about 14 people here at the community forum, which is great. We also recorded it, which we need to get, I need to get that link out and up on our website. So I need to follow up. Sorry for the delay. Yeah, we did have some, some questions after the fact. I forwarded you guys. One person in particular had emailed, asking some questions and giving some ideas, which I always appreciate, ideas. I think some of the ideas of, one is, one was the question, why don't we just not touch the crosswalk, and I think the answer is because that was the whole purpose. That was the start of it, is that the crosswalk is in a dangerous spot. The other questions were, you know, the other recommendations were to keep the crosswalk where it is and install the push-button blinking lights, similar to Newmarket, to alert kids, alert drivers of kids crossing. Re-using the parking lot spaces that are already there, but maybe angling them in fresh paint. Box out no parking zones around the corner, on the side of the building, with fresh paint. Pave a lane leading from the school to the dirt lot, so there's a one-way loop around for visitors, which we did kind of visit, I remember, in the first iteration of these plans. Bobby, correct me if I'm wrong. But we had originally discussed doing one loop around, and it still doesn't kind of get rid of the issue over here. And then, level, then, lastly, leveling and paving the whole dirt lot is expensive. Could we just fill in some potholes and leave the dirt parking lot? And get a one-way plow, loop plowed in the winter? So this is just somebody, a parent, giving some recommendations. Yeah.
Can I, I actually really appreciated hearing this, very detailed list of potential recommendations or solutions. And in fact, it sort of hits to a point that I brought up last month, about really considering having a member of the public be part of the planning group that you are a main port person on. I understand that neither Jane nor I can be in addition to that, because then it would be a board meeting. Although that does bet the question, you know, it's not that we're not trying to have this be a public transparent experience, right? But just the logistics of having repeated board meetings, with having to notice it and everything is a bit bulky, right, in terms of like trying to plan something, so I'm not suggesting that per se.
Yeah.
But I do think that having a more formal sort of presence of townspeople who have a vested interest in this, and this particular person had a lot of experience, it sounds like, in doing something like this, in some of her work experiences. A lot of the suggestions that she states here, I think, are things that I would argue we could probably do some of them now, with maybe even some of the money in the safety and security, I mean, like the painting of the lines. I'm just saying, even if we go ahead with, and the town approves, you know, our particular proposal and it goes ahead, it's not going to happen tomorrow, and so some of these things potentially could be, I don't know how much it costs to paint lines, for example, or to box out no parking zones, or some fill in the potholes. But I do think some of these suggestions are very valid suggestions. And I think it's an example of how having an additional voice to the group might be helpful.
Good idea. I also like the first suggestion, where regardless of where the crosswalk is, looking into a proper blinking crosswalk light is a great suggestion. I really like that. And at least figuring out what the procedure is for that to happen, and if we need to move it, if this project moves forward, what would be the logistics of that? Because the crosswalk is, I do agree, the crosswalk does need to be moved, but I think the crosswalk light and the stoplight there for crosswalk would be really helpful thought to continue moving on. But I do like your idea of like, having somebody from the public give us their, give them, give us their, their feedback and advocacy. I like that.
I agree with that, but looking at the empty seats in front of us, we've been discussing this for a year and a half, and people haven't even come to a board meeting to discuss it.
But they have been going to the informational meetings, which is a really
Yes.
like lovely sign, and making sure that maybe the people that attend approaching them first to see if they attend a meeting or not, to at least, you know, say, yep, I reviewed what we said in the board meeting, I reviewed the, you know, conclusions or notes, I'm up to date on this, and here's the feedback I have, I think would even be, at the very least, a helpful step. Because there are, I mean, did anybody repeat-attend this one?
Nope. Nah, no. John Hayden was at the last deliberative session and came to this. But did, no, there weren't repeats.
One, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, I was, I hear your point about, you know, our seats are not full, even though we have candy on them. Now, however, I also acknowledge that evening sessions aren't good for everybody. A, even though these are posted, but if we have somebody who is engaged, I mean, this was not like a two-sentence complaint email, this was like a pretty thoughtful and, I think, practical sort of list of some things to consider that you might have already considered. I don't know that I considered all of these, just because I hadn't really been part of that particular planning.
So I just want to be clear that I haven't had any meetings outside of board meetings, other than the initial meeting.
Oh, yeah, we know that.
With, no, but what I'm hearing is, is I don't, I'm hearing a lot of, I don't know, I didn't know that, I didn't... Everything that I know has been shared here as well, by Chris, Chris, Ellen. So I'm just, I'm a little confused on the...
I can clarify.
Okay.
Yeah, it's because I don't want you to, I'm not saying that.
Yeah, okay. I just want to be clear that like
Yes, thank you.
There's not these big meetings going on. There's not secret meetings going on with a committee that doesn't have, I think I'm more clarifying for the public, that there's not a committee. There's no committee. It's been, we've had these discussions all at board meetings. And what you're saying is, it would be nice to have a committee with representation from the...
I think that would be one great solution or idea, and I think what I was trying to allude to, Jenny, was sort of what created the, I want to make sure I'm using the right word, it's not a estimate, it's a, it's a, tell me.
Proposal.
Proposal. What created the proposal that sort of is not what we're tied to at all, but it is informing our decision for moving forward to the next step? I was in the part of that conversation, and I don't, I'm not saying I should, should have been, but the people who were, were, you were able, Jenny, to involve the key, you know, a lot of really key people, so I thought it was a very informed plan that was made by a good number of, it wasn't just you going to to Martini's and create this, but I do think
Wasn't me at all.
It would, you know, when we had sort of the, the board meeting, and we said, hey, can we get a revised version of that, because that, that's pretty
Costly.
over the top, you know, costly. And the few people that were at that board meeting saw that we were trying to get feedback, to get some feedback, get a follow-up draft. But I think, I don't know what conversation was had with the person who created that proposal to say, hey, are some of these suggestions, for example, possible to to throw into a proposal that could help us understand the different options, or help the town understand the options? And I last year, we were, time was on our side, and it was very like, oh my gosh, we have to hurry up and make this decision or not, and it turns out that we didn't have the right amount of time to do it, unfortunately. So this year, we do have time, which is great, and I understand that we have until January. What is our...
Well, my recommendation has been that if the board wants to put this on the ballot, that you guys really need to decide this month.
Well, that's what I want to clarify.
So that we can get ahead of the timelines and make sure that we're putting the wheels in motion.
I need clarification on that.
I think that...
What wheels need to be put in motion?
Well, so I mean, if you want it on the ballot this spring, then we have to follow the DARE timeline, so that's the timeline that we had printed out, I think.
I think it's in the meeting.
Yeah, so then, we have to have a bond hearing. But that's not until January, but then you have to publicly post that.
Right.
January 8th, right.
In advance, so.
It's not something that was, that's set in stone based on the timelines. It was my recommendation based on previous projects and in discussions, you know, at the central office, in terms of not wanting to be operator, operating from behind, like we were again last year at the last minute, that
I love not being...
Yeah, right, so
Sort of rushing, yes.
Really, in order to stay ahead of this, is this project something that the board wants to move forward with or not? My recommendation is to, for the board to make that decision this month. I mean, one thing to consider is that, you know, this, the concerns were raised, TF Moran committed and did the survey work, and then we had the proposal that was done at no cost by Martini Northern. And a point of clarification that I think came up at the last community forum is that, well, so right now, you, you folks have a proposal of one that would cost $1.8 million. What happens if it were to go over, once you, like, say, we did follow the typical process, right? Which I'm not saying you always have to, but the typical process in SAU 16 is that we adhere to what we have done so far, and we would put it, you know, we would, we have the proposal, we would put it out on the warrant article, and we would say that it would cost no more than 1.8, so that nothing would come, be able to come over that, I think was one of the questions that came up at the community forum.
That was a question that came up.
So that alleviates that concern. That was a big, common theme, was that, well, what happens if it goes over? Well, it wouldn't go over, and I didn't have that answer with the clarity that I do now at the community forum. So that is our, you know, our standard process in SAU 16, and I think really, so not necessarily that tonight has to be the final vote, but I think we do need to get a sense of, are we moving forward or are we not? Sooner than later.
And I think it'll also impact a little bit on how Suzy budgets, so anytime we have another item on the ballot, we always try to keep the school as low as possible. Not that we don't try anyway, but like, if there's a teacher contract or a parent contract on the ballot, we try extremely hard to keep everything else as low as possible, because we wanted all to pass, because at the end of the day, you have to add them all together, and that's your budget, so if there's certain things... if there's certain things that Suzie would like to do or almost need to do, knowing if it's going on the ballot or not will
Will impact.
help her decide what we can do here, what we can hold off on here to help get that passed.
That is, that is another reason why, everything is connected.
Yeah, because at the end of the day, your budget is all your warrant articles that are together.
Yep.
So if Suzie wants a ton of new things at the school, but also the safety project, when you put it all together, that's going to have a big tax impact. So that's where we strategically say, okay, can the things at the school wait another year so that we can get this passed in the warrant?
And, sorry, just one more clarifying point, which I was trying to look for, but my computer hates me tonight. Can you speak to the question about bidding and because that came up as well, that was a big question.
Why don't we have, why don't we get bids now? Because to get bids now is costly, tens of thousands of dollars to get additional bids. And to, in my mind, it's a question mark in terms of whether, for you folks to consider, in terms of whether you want to be spending money for something that may not end up getting passed by the town as a project. I mean, there are a couple of, like, another alternative would be, you know, we could, I mean, there could be an RFP for bids now, and we could spend the money. There could be an RFP for a construction manager to get a closer look at another estimate of the costs.
So I'd hate, so that you're getting closer to what I, what I think I would like to see. And I think, I could be wrong, but I think a number of people in the community are wondering why this can't be. And that is potentially spending some dollars, like, this, what we have in front of us is awesome, it's beautiful, and it was free. Like, those are great things to have, but, great. But it's also one solution that has one-dollar figure that's pretty high, that I'm concerned might be too high for a majority of people to make this actually pass. I don't know if I can say that, but I'm saying it. And if that's the case, I feel like it might be helpful for us to know ahead of time if we had option A, option B, option C, or however we wanted to delineate it. So that then, I don't know how long it takes for that to turn around, but if in, what is today, October? In November, or God forbid, December, I know it's getting very late. We can say, as a board, we would like to put, you know, Plan B forward or Plan C. And I sort of was asking that, I think, before too, but it was not clear to me that that was even an option. That's one thing. If the board feels that it's not sort of wise, timeframe-wise, to do all that, because it's October, not September, that's one decision we can make. If we were to decide to put this on the ballot, I would want us to consider putting, you know how we have, like, if the above one does not pass, we should consider X, Y, or Z? I'd like to have, it may not be possible with the bond, but to have some sort of mechanism to come up with a Plan B, because I don't want us to be in the exact same position next school year after the vote, if it doesn't pass.
So what kind of suggestion or thought would you have for Plan B?
On the, as a warrant article?
Not, yes, the warrant.
Yeah. Well, I have some ideas, but I don't want to say it just yet, in case people have thoughts about what I first said.
I just want to clarify one more thing that came out of the meeting before we get further into it, is in front of you, you have the survey services that we paid for out of impact fees, because it did come up, somebody asked if we had done
Survey.
No, yeah, yes.
Core, a core sample.
A core sample, sorry. And I was, I could not remember, honestly. So this is what we had done. We had done a survey, a site survey of Tax Map 102, Law 87, Tax Map 103, Lots 10 and 11. We did a wetlands delineation, an updated existing current plan, existing conditions plan of both lots, I should say, sorry. And that included project coordination. So that was what was done. I just wanted to clarify what we've already spent money on. So core sampling was not done at that time, because a question, one of the questions was, why would you have to spend money if you've already done that? And we have not. So that could be something that needs to be done in order to come up with additional proposals.
That was an additional five-figure amount to do a core sampling.
So
I don't recall specifically what it was, but
So I just wanted to clarify some of that, too. Yep.
So let me just finish that thought then. If we were to vote on and approve to move forward with the wheels to turn to put this ballot of X dollars on for a bond in February or March, I feel like it might be wise for us to say something like, if it's, you know, I'm not the legal scholar in here or the financial person, but if it said, were Article 1 or Article above not to pass, does the town raise an appropriate X number of dollars to allow the board to spend on coming up, basically paying for additional proposals? Because that's sort of what we're not doing now because of the cost for it. And, and I actually, I don't know, not even sure where that money would come from if we did theoretically could come.
Have to be a separate warrant article, I believe. So there would be one or more article, I'm assuming. So you would have to double-check, one or more article for the bond.
The bond, yeah.
The second warrant article would be, if
As a second, yes, correct.
Pass, do we have permission to raise an appropriate X amount for additional you know, work to support A-Safety and Security project?
But you'd have to set a number to
Totally, but is that, can we do that? Because it's a bond, or is that
I'm happy to call Department of Revenue and ask. We did have a similar situation in East Kingston, but it was actually dissolving of the trust fund. So we needed the dissolving of the trust fund to happen first before we could reallocate. So the first of the series of warrant articles that were just dissolved, and it was like, upon Article 2 passing, then this would happen.
Yeah.
So we have done something along those lines in the past, but I would definitely need to get Department of Revenue guidance on the language, because there were some certain things we had to put underwinds. So I wouldn't say it's not in the realm of possibilities.
Like, we have something like that for when we do the contract, or the, or the budget even.
Right, if this doesn't pass, then it's the default budget, takes it back.
To the default, that's just like the way it goes.
No, but there's, when we had
The teacher contract was the same, contingency plan, in other words.
When we do a CBA, we always typically put underneath it, if Article 2 fails, then we authorize to have one special meeting to positively appropriate funds to address cost.
And that's a separate article. Yeah, so that's sort of what I'm thinking. I didn't know if it was
And do we know what the cost would be to get additional RFPs? Do we
To get it, to RFP for bids or RFPs for, for like a construction manager? No, I know what which one, which one are we thinking?
I'm sorry, construction man, like, somebody who, like, would be a designer?
I think it would be, it's going to be, I think it's something about like $10,000 per bid.
I'm not, I'm not sure.
Is what I recall.
$10,000 per bid of what?
To get, for, to ask folk, to do an RFP, to ask folks to submit official bids for the, for the project. Or an alternative is to do an RFP to get a construction manager who could come onboard to further estimate the costs out in lieu of getting, doing an RFP for actual bids.
So, and this is a different district, but they, for example
No, this is all helpful. This is very helpful.
For their solar project that they just did. They worked with one company to kind of determine what the scope of the project would be, similar to how you guys did with T F Moran. And then they came up with a number. And then they put it on the warrant article, and it passed. And so then they did the RFP and see who had bid on the project, so they had the authority to move forward with the project. And when they did the RFP, they had two people respond, one being the person that helped create the project, and then one other company. The other company came in lower. And so now they ultimately went with the other company. And so when we go to bond, you don't bond the full amount for the warrant article, because when you write the warrant article, it's up to that amount.
See, but, sorry, I'll let you
And then we were going with the other company, and so we're only bonding the lower amount. So what's on the warrant article is also only the authority to enter a contract up to. It doesn't say you have to enter a contract with that amount, it's up to. So then after it passed, and they did the RFP and chose the other company, the bond is now $200,000 less.
But we had to pay, but did we have to pay for that other quote?
We didn't pay for a quote.
For the RFP, right, because
When you do the RFP, you say what the project is, and I know, I wasn't, I didn't draft the RFP, but you say what the project is, and you have to publicly post it, and then people bid on it. But in order for people to bid, then you might have to do site work.
Right, so
It's a different animal.
It's the, if, if, if we're looking for people to come out and bid, they would more than likely not necessarily bid on what has been proposed, but come up with a whole separate, from what my my understanding, they would come up with a whole separate plan, and that would cost us money. That's my understanding.
They would, they would come up with this whole separate plan, potentially.
Potentially.
And where is the money being spent? I don't, that, I'm sorry, I'm not, it's not clear to me.
No, it's fine. It's to do, to do the drawings, like, the drawing we have of the
Yeah.
To do the actual plan. There's, there's a fee that goes along with that.
Right, it's a little bit different, because it's just solar panels in the roof.
Right.
They don't need, like, architectural, they didn't need
It's because it's higher.
Work, right, all these other things.
Like, if you need, like
Survey.
They're going to want to come in and do their own survey, their own, or their own, they may potentially want to do their own
Which is people power, it's power, yeah. And then, Ellen, from your other suggestion, or your other example is a, what'd you call it, a construction?
A construction manager.
And who would basically be contracted potentially to
Yes.
to do this for us?
Yes, to help estimate the costs, because, I mean, again, these are options. One of the concerns that also came up at the community forum was that some folks felt that the bid is too high. And not in terms, not just in terms of not wanting to spend that much, but they felt that it was overbid. And that it really shouldn't be this costly to do this type of work.
Well, that's a very fair statement. I mean, of course, right, that's, I think what, again, it's different, but when I got the trees taken out the back of our house, we had one guy come, he was like, give me six grand. Okay, that's a lot of money, but we need the trees gone. Another person came, it's going to be three grand. I'm like, it's the same trees. I'm going to obviously go to the $3,000 person.
Well, and that's what we said. We would obviously go out in, once we had permission to spend the money, go out and go out, get bids, and
Right, but I guess my point is, it didn't actually cost six grand. Really, you know, and so it didn't, doesn't really cost
Absolutely.
So their feedback is valid, yeah.
So I just want us to come up with, I don't, I really don't want to block this at all. Jenny, I can't highlight enough how much thankful I am for the work that you've put into this, to organize, thank you for finding that.
Oh, no, it's fine. No, I mean, I've had the same questions, and it's a very confusing process to me, but I'm also not an engineer, so I I have to put my trust in, you know, Chris and Chris.
Who has done a lot of, yes.
They've, they've done the like work, and, and, I mean, I, I think everything that we're questioning is valid.
We could get T F Moran back to the, to come to the next meeting to also
But wait, T F Moran or the people who did the what?
The survey.
Survey, not, not the people who
Right, not, well, we could get them both to come back. Trying to give you options.
Also, you know, this, maybe this, you don't typically go about this not being as informed, but like, remember I said last month, why can't we just say as a board, we don't want to spend more than a million dollars on this, or X dollars? I don't know why we can't just do that, unless, like, the bond really requires something, like, legitimate, formal, like, what is the proposal to get the bond in the first place?
I think, I think the answer to that might be that if it is, if we do go out for bids, and it is significantly over what we budgeted.
You can't do it.
You can't do it.
Fine, but you can do some alternate version of it.
You know, the other potential, oh, sorry.
That's okay. One of the things that also got brought up, and I've said it a few times, and I remember us discussing it in that initial January, that meeting with T F Moran and
Martini.
and Martini, is the, because I asked, I said, what if we just do, move the crosswalk and do the the switchback?
Yeah.
And they, they said at that meeting, it's still like, almost a million dollars. So if you're going to do, because of the gradient. So, and from what I understand, and I'm going to preface this with, I'm not an engineer. But from what I understand, is to do the work over there, even if we were to do things like fill in holes and everything like that, it's literally removing the dirt and putting in engineered dirt. It's, it's, it's not as easy as just, like, leveling it out and everything that. Now, do I, I, I hope to God it doesn't cost 1.8 million, but we just don't know. So, yeah.
Jenny, I think I totally, that makes a lot of sense, and I was there at that meeting, so I heard the same thing.
Right.
But I guess what that didn't really answer is, like, we have this fabulous email with some good suggestions. I have no idea, I can't believe, I can't imagine that this would cost 1.8 million.
No, but I don't think that solves our problem, I'll be honest. After reading that, I don't think it solves our problem. I don't think it solves the fact that kids would have to still cross two ways. The sightline over here does not, it does not, the initial issue with the project is that area over there. And nothing that was suggested here is going to fix that, specifically when there's anything going on at the fire department. What, that was also a big concern that was brought up by the fire department, is that we share we share an entrance right there. So the very first day of school, there was a fire call at, and I know this is like, it can be once in a while, but actually, it's happened twice now this year, where there's been an emergency call at the exact same time that people are trying to pull in here, cross the street, and you can't get out. And then we lose our crossing guard as well. I'm not trying to be an alarmist, and just, these are the things that have come up as we've been digging into the project. It's not just painting lines. I mean, frankly, the, in the back there, it's eroding in. I mean, we're losing more pavement than anything. So the back is going to have to be dealt with anyway. It still doesn't help when, it doesn't give us any additional parking for when there is a concert or an event or even a town outing. I mean, you saw the videos of kids crossing and people backing out, and, and it's, it's, so this would be a very big Band-Aid, as far as I'm concerned. And I, and it's totally just my opinion, I don't feel comfortable continuing to put Band-Aids on, because I do know that also, the other thing about filling in potholes and divots and grading that, and that, I mean, it's been talked about since I started at New Fields with my kids, and it's, it's been quoted on, and there has been grading over there, and it didn't do anything, because there's still holes over there. So I appreciate this feedback 110%, and I love that a parent took the time to to give us feedback and, and but I also know that in the last 10 years of me being involved in the school, all of these points have been brought up, and there's have been multiple reasons why it's, it's a Band-Aid and not a fix, so. And, so
Right, it wasn't about 20 years ago that it was, that this project was originally discussed? Something to consider, that it has been a concern of the community for a while.
I would just say, if we decide to vote on this and move ahead as putting it on the ballot, I really, I'm telling you now, I want to figure out a way to put if X doesn't, because alternatively, we will literally be in the same position again next September.
Agreed. And I, I am 100% on board with that as well, because I don't want, I don't want, I want us to put something forward, but I don't want it to die with it. I want to still, I want to keep going and figure it out. It actually came up, somebody said, well, what if it's going to cost more? It actually came up, somebody said, well, what if it's gonna cost more? I said, well, we'll have to go back to the drawing board. And I'm sure we could talk to 20 different companies and they'd come up with 20 different plans, but that's also not realistic and not cost effective as well. So I think, I mean, I, I think as a board, we've done our due diligence as far as getting quotes, getting, getting, um, plans, using money responsibly and not spending money that didn't need to be spent. But I'm also one person, so. But I do like the idea of if not, then we have permission to do additional spend for.
Maybe it's the hiring or the construction manager. I, I, I think I'd like to have clarity on, on that. A, if we can do it. And then B, if, you know, is it that we budget the money for a, a construction manager? So how much was that cost? I really don't know. Can we inquire between now and next?
Yes.
Before meeting about those things?
Definitely. Molly and I can discuss it more in terms of what that would look like and what the legalities are around it.
Yeah, I just know, I think it's kind of like a combination of like Stratton's looking at all options because they're busting at the seams. So I know that they've spent a lot of money on architectural studies and different things like that. Whereas on the Brentwood side, when they just did the solar panels, I don't think there was any cost associated with that because we're just putting solar panels.
Right, right. Direct product.
So I do know Stratton has spent a, a good amount of money on the architectural firm, but at the same time, I know Brentwood didn't really have that expense with the solar panels. So this doesn't really fit either one of them.
How were they able to, sorry, I pointed to Stratton. Did they, did that have to be budgeted or approved through a warrant? Or is that like in a?
So they have. The, um, they have room in their operating budget to pay for it. But they also, I believe, had used possibly some trust fund money.
Okay, so it's usable for that, okay.
And actually, it, actually, at the beginning, or they all started, they kind of like, the COVID, and we always had a lot of money left over in the COVID.
Got it, okay.
So at the end of the year, they had made a motion to encumber, I wanna say $60,000 to look into architectural stuff. And so then they had credit at the, the firm that we draw down on.
If we, if this goes to bond and gets on the warrant article and we get quotes back and it's over the 1.8, 1.9, whatever we put on the bond. What is the timeframe to get into a bond? So what I'm really asking is if it's more or if we say we wanna put the bond at 1 million and we get, and it's more than that, it's 1 point, every quote that comes in is 1.5. Can we hold off on going into bond for another year to go back to the town?
So, so there's two different things here. So bond sales happen twice a year.
Yep.
It's, um, I think it's either August, I think it's August and January, one summer, one winter.
Six months part.
Yeah, six months part, somewhere around there. So when we, if it passed, we would typically like to bond in the summer one, right? Um, and so, a little story about Brentwood. They went to do the summer one because they were ready, they knew the vendor they were gonna go with, everything. But the utility hadn't approved the project yet. And so to bond, you have to have sign off by bond counsel, who says that this is a legit project, that they recommend going forward with it. She would not sign off because the utility had not approved yet. So we missed the bond sale. So then we had to do a bond anticipation note to get us to the January sale. So you have approval for the whole fiscal year. So if you're not ready in the, in the summer one, we can do it in the winter one. Or if you wanna start somewhere in between, then we would look at a bond anticipation note, which is just a Band-Aid to get you to the bond sale.
Is that due to the wording of the warrant article or the rules of the bond? So if we put in the warrant article, project you start or bond to be within this timeframe, 2025, 2026, whatever it might be, is that possible, reasonable, or do we know?
Sure.
If, if it goes over the amount that the voters paid on, we have to go to the, we have to go to vote again.
To the voters, but does that, or does that negate the prior? If, so for example, if we say not to exceed $1 million and it's 1.2, but we say the date to do the project is in one of the two, you need to start the project is to your timeframe.
I don't, I'd have to check with my legal friends.
So we have like a million, but we're only going back to the public for another, whatever.
Another 200,000.
Right, whatever it might be. Not, and granted, this is not the ideal situation.
Right.
By any stretch of the imagination, but.
It's an interesting question nonetheless. I think.
I have to consult my legal slash Department of Revenue friends on how that would work logistically.
Right.
I have a, a, a Jason question, I think is just as, I think we'd wanna know the answer to this too. In that exact same instance, we put the bond, we got it approved, it came out and it was higher than what we, it was 1.2 and, and we had the approval for one. Is there anything stopping us from saying, thank you, we appreciate that offer, we can't do, we don't have that much money? That's not what we, the town approved. We need to rework what our plan is, that may cost $10,000 to do it, but now we have a revised plan that we'll put back out to RFP and it, lo and behold, it comes back at 1 million on the button. Great, let's move ahead. Can, can that happen?
I believe that can happen if it's in the.
If it's in the timeframe.
I just have to double check when you put it on. I don't remember ever seeing a, a limitation on the duration of when you have to start it, but I believe it has to be that year because you vote annually.
I'm not even suggesting that there's a limitation, but it sounds like regardless, it's that year anyway. I just, that to me is the, the crux of the answer to my question. Why can't we just make the amount a little bit lower if we wanted to? And, um, it sounds like we could do that if we wanted to, from the get-go.
You'd have to have a plan in place before bond counsel will sign off.
Right.
That, I get that.
Right, and the plan is, I'm sorry. The plan is what Jenny has been working on.
That's what we have.
Plan is what we know, and we know that the parking lot and the crosswalk are going to potentially cost this amount.
So if we put that amount on and it passes, but the actual bid comes at higher, we can still, we're still gonna have to reassess it and.
Yeah.
Right, but is it likely that the bid would, if we put out an RFP saying not to exceed 1.8, is it, is it likely that people would, wouldn't they just say, no, we're not gonna bid on this? Because we don't, we don't.
That's a good point.
We don't believe that we could do it for that amount, so we're not gonna bother.
Right.
Right?
And then that would bring us back to the table anyway and have to reassess.
Because we can't get bids that would.
Right.
Be under those.
I, I think that, and I, I, there were a lot of qual, qualified folks that came to the community forums who did say, it, it seems as though this price is over and above what you could get this project done for. And that is not uncommon, to my knowledge, that the, that the first, like someone such as Martini Northern that gave us that price, that they might bid it a little bit high.
Well, he even said he put a lot of buffer in because there was some unknown things that they, you know, the oil tank is an unknown factor. There's, um, they did not do the, what is it called?
Core sample?
Core sample, thank you. The core sample, so there's some, there could be some ledge, there could not, he quoted, from what I understand, they quoted it based on needing to blast ledge. And there may not be ledge, so it could come down, so.
I do remember him saying repeatedly, this is like the highest number that I can imagine.
A very high number.
So I think it's unlikely that we would get an amount.
Unless we wait 10 years.
That's a different story.
Frankly, if we wait a year.
I think it's unlikely that we would get something over 1.8.
Yeah, and I mean, for whatever reason, if it goes over and we don't have work, we don't have any bids. When we put it on a warrant article, there's kind of two parts to the warrant article. It's the authority to spend the full amount, the 1.8 million or 1.2, whatever, whatever it is. And then at the bottom of it, it says, and further to raise and appropriate X amount for the current year. So in your first year, you're gonna have your first principal and interest payment. So like, for example, the Brentwood went on the warrant for 850,000 and then it said to further raise and appropriate 20,000 in the first year. So if for whatever reason we don't get any bids, then that additional amount to raise for the first year, it would have been raised in taxation, but then it would go back into fund balance.
This was helpful conversation, I'm just.
No, it's great.
I feel like we didn't have this level of conversation before. We had a lot of conversations, but not like about this. So thank you for.
No, I, I, it's all really great conversation. My brain hurts at this point because I feel like there's so much in it, honestly. And that's why I asked for this, because I couldn't remember, because we looked at it a year ago. So, yeah.
You don't necessarily have to make an official vote tonight as to whether or not you want to move forward with a bond hearing. What I'm saying is, is that it would, it would be helpful to have known this evening if you are not planning to move forward with the project. You know, just a, like, green light, red light, I think is a helpful sense to gather so that we can move forward and make decisions based on this information. Again, as Molly discussed, it impacts budgeting and it just, if one thing up does, is connected to the next, everything's integrated.
And I also think if you do wanna move forward, we would really need to start advertising right now for more community conversations. Because if I remember last time, we had this great idea, but it was late in the process, so.
And the people came to deliver it at the end, yeah.
Yeah, so.
That's what we've had, we've had the community forums. We, we have, that was the plan, is to have one in the spring, one in the fall. So that process is, but we can still think of other ways perhaps to get folks to come to the meetings to discuss.
Or just somehow make people aware it's still there.
It's still there, yeah, yeah.
That's a good.
Cause like.
Yep, that's helpful.
If we don't do that, and it doesn't have to be community conversations, but.
Right.
So that people don't forget about what happened in the past and then all of a sudden the public hearing, like, people are like, what?
Yeah.
That's fair.
Yep, that's. Yeah, no, and I, I did, so in, you know, I, I was very transparent. The, the people who showed up here and, um, cause some of them were very surprised and, and, um, they were like, well, where can we find this information? And they asked, and I said, well, I'm here to answer any questions, but also we have been talking about it at every single board meeting for a year and a half. So I did encourage people to go specifically, go watch that deliberative session where TF Moran and Martini.
Can I pause this conversation for a second? Can we have Suzie give her principal report and so she can head out?
Yes, absolutely.
And then we'll get back to this. Yeah, she'll be quick.
No problem.
Okay, so a few things. One, uh, today's custodian day. And so we celebrated our two custodians. And just so you guys know, custodians are so important. And, um, we have a really great team between the two that we have right now. And I really do believe, at least in my time here, this is the best the building has looked. It also helps that the children are competing for a golden trash can award in which they are working very hard at keeping their rooms clean, which is great. I wanted to make you all aware that on a monthly basis, we have, um, five members of our, um, faculty. Linda Jowett, who's a unified arts teacher. Alora, um, Redland, who is our kindergarten teacher. Erin McGinley, who's a paraprofessional. And Melissa Toby, who is our reading specialist and kind of serves as a parent. They are reviewing our handbook on a monthly basis for next school year. So it's already been beneficial, they're chopping it into eight different parts. Everything from the layout of how our handbook reads, which may not seem like a big deal, but it, thought being put into it is, is, um, wonderful. And then just checking to make sure, again, our SAU is working very hard at alignment, making sure that we're fairly consistent with our policies that other schools are, um, implementing as well. And so, once a month, they meet and make recommendations to the faculty. It goes in front of our faculty for them to tease out or ask questions, and then it will come to you. So in the November 1, I'll bring, you know, two months' work. Just to let you know, not that it's just a, a kind of a complimentary, this is some of the changes that we've made. And then the other thing is, we just had, um, a wonderful assembly last Friday where, um, we had some talent. And, uh, of course, we had song and dance. And, uh, Mrs. Zalward, our counselor, laid out this month's characteristic trait, which is responsibility. Um, and of course, Mrs. Maglan's class won the golden trash can award. And then the other thing that I just really wanna highlight is this has been one of the most seamless years, uh, for the opening of our school. And a lot of that is because we probably are the most fully staffed that we have been and have needed to be in quite a while. Having our new reading specialist has allowed not only for all of our dyslexic screeners to occur in the timeline that they're supposed to occur, but also all of our other, um, diagnostic assessments instead of the teachers. And there are some assessments that we do want our teachers to, um, sit and understand where their student is so that they can, um, navigate their instruction towards those gaps and where students are. And then there are other diagnostics that we do that kind of give us a school range. And so by having someone like Melissa and Jody pair up, those big diagnostic ranges are now on that personnel versus our, our teachers. And so teachers can get going with actually teaching and not having to do this diagnostic part. And then on top of that, the intervention team, which includes our special education and our new reading specialist and our math, are able to dissect that information at a really granular level, which then is implemented into our MTSS, which is what does that student specifically need? How do we address that student? Who has this, what schedule is allowed to, to hold that? What grouping can that student be in? That takes time and effort to be able to do that. And so I do think that having our new reading specialist onboard has, has allowed us to work in a really efficient and effective way this year. And it's exciting because teachers are already feeling the impact of that. Yeah.
Can I ask one question?
Of course.
On that, kind of, it's in that realm.
Yes.
What, I, I know we do it, but I guess my question is, is year over year, when students are coming into the classroom, how are the teachers, um, uh, specifically for kids who are maybe on an IEP or a 504? Is that something that they're reviewing before the students get here? Like, how, how does that work?
Great question.
Yeah, okay.
So at the, um, of, of course, the team, which includes the teacher and the special education teacher and myself and whatever other, um, services that that child needs that's on an IEP or a 504, they, they meet annually, right? And then there's also progress reports that go out. As far as when that transition happens for teacher to teacher, that happens at the beginning of the year, where we basically have, um, our BCBA come in and our entire special education team, sometimes the interventionists, because we wanna double dip, right? We don't, we don't, we want as much intervention for our, for our neediest students. That happens at the beginning of the year during one of those faculty meetings.
Okay.
One of our first three to four days.
Awesome, okay. Cool.
BCBA.
I just Google it.
It's a behavior analyst.
Thank you.
Board certified behavior analyst.
Thank you.
Yep, she's fantastic, the one we have. And then we also, um, brought on a, a new school psychologist.
School psychologist out of Suresk, Southeastern Regional Services Center, is I believe the acronym.
And she's also a fantastic member of our team. And so, um, we're running on all cylinders, it feels like, right now.
Awesome. No, that, thank you. I, I sort of knew the answer, but I wanted to ask anyway, because you were talking about the transition stuff.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, we can get back to.
I was gonna give a kudos, but I can, I can give later. Suzie, I just wanted to give a kudos to, so obviously all the teachers and the custodian and you and everybody. But in particular, I just for Beth Lieberman and the library and our library content, A, everything is really impressive. And but a specific example, last two weeks ago, Zara, our third, third grader has really gotten into this book series and, and we read the first book, the second book, and then she came to the third one. And we realized we, we didn't have it. We had like the fifth one, but we didn't have the fourth one. We literally went on a search through our, you know, the town library, went to the state, I looked into library loan, and I looked on my audible, I, we couldn't find it. And I was like, Zara, I don't, we're gonna have to, I don't want to have to order it and, you know, but we can figure something out. The next day she had library, she, Ms. Lieberman said, Zara, what would you like to be reading? She goes, you wouldn't happen to have upside down that, or whatever it was. And, and Beth goes, absolutely, I do. Come over. And she like, and you should have seen Zara's, it was the most, she came home like the brightest eyes. And to me, it was just such a wonderful example of, A, the fact that we have not just a robust collection in our library, but Beth Lieberman has a library who
Incredibly thoughtful.
Who was just so, so thoughtful about connecting her and.
If you remember during the pandemic, when students didn't come in, she handpicked books for each show in their interest. I mean, she's incredibly.
Yeah, she's really good at that.
On that note, I just want to say, um, it's okay.
It's on the agenda.
Do we, do we need to go into not public?
No, we don't need to go into non-public. We can go to new business.
We can, we can go to that. So we can go to that. So we can let you go. Yeah, we can go to that.
New business that we did receive a letter of retirement.
And I, Tracy Hager has been with us for 23 years and kudos to her. She has put her heart and soul into this school and she is having a wonderful send off year. But she will be very, very much missed. She brings a wealth of information to the faculty. And most importantly, she really does love the children. And it's been a very apparent and but she's ready to be a grandma full time. And so again, she'll be really missed.
Absolutely.
She has been a pillar of our school for a long time.
And to clarify, that is for June, June.
Our letter didn't.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. She's not leaving us tomorrow. Thank God. Thank you, Suzie.
So much. Thank you so much.
Good night. So the board does need to vote to accept the letter of retirement.
Okay, so I will make a motion to accept Mrs. Hager's letter of retirement.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I mean, can we say no? I'm just kidding.
With regrets.
Thank you. With regrets, we accept. How's that?
Okay, let's get back to the school safety piece so we could send Molly.
I think I never, my kids are with my parents.
She's avoiding, she's avoiding bedtime inside, right? Yeah. I like it. Okay. Okay, so.
So we have sort of.
So you, you want to know if it's a, if we're, if we want to move forward with the project, not necessarily like hash out the details or go to a vote, but just the intent of this board of whether or not we're going to go forward with the project.
With some sort of bond.
That's, that's.
That's helpful.
Because I do think it's going to impact what Suzie chooses to move forward with, the operating budget related to maintenance and facilities versus what she chooses not to move forward. And I think that's a main driver for it.
Right. For example, one of the needs of this building is the driveway area. It does need repaving regardless. Like if this safety project had never occurred, it would have been something that has been on the list, with my understanding, for two to three years.
To be budgeted.
Right.
Yeah.
You don't want to put it in the operating budget, but then also have the warrant article have it because then you double it.
And we, I know Jane had asked about the, you know, the facilities walkthrough and the long, long range planning with regards to three to five year plan for facilities. Rusty and Suzie and I did do that walkthrough last week. And so Rusty is working on the plant, the five year plan for that, where he will triage what we, what we noticed during the walkthrough and the various facilities needs that we'll want to address in the next five years. And he'll be able to give us a sense of that as well in terms of having the big picture in mind as you guys make this decision with regards to next steps.
To that end, I, I, I think we've had good conversations both before now and now. I think it's reasonable for us to anticipate. I, I'm not gonna put a red light on personally on stopping this conversation. I like to have that information for next month so that we can figure out the best way to move forward. But yeah, I think, I think it would be worthwhile to get that information.
That's helpful.
Yeah, it's helpful. I mean, we can discuss more and we just have to follow the DRA timelines for the bond, bond hearing.
When do we make the decision? Say we decided to move ahead with a bond with a amount, when do we make the decision of the three, five, seven that you sent out? Or is that sort of in the moment, like at the end?
No, we can, uh, no, we can do that when we go to bond. So that's not.
In winter or fall, summer, like you said?
Yeah. So when we, if, so if we were to go forward with the project, if it passes, then we would fill out all the bond paperwork after we select a vendor. And in that part of the bond application is how many, the duration of the bond that you want. And they can try and change that up until the end. So.
That also came up at the meeting. And the question was, is will we determine the bond length prior to putting it on? And is that part of the warrant article?
Like the impact cost?
That, what?
How many years?
How many years?
Right.
Somebody did ask that question.
Sounds like, no, right.
So I don't believe, and I'm just gonna pull up on the most recent one that went on, it was Brentwood. I don't believe that they do that. And what you do have to put is the first year principal and interest, but usually that's the same regardless of what the.
That's what I was just gonna check.
Yeah, it was. Well, yeah, if you go.
So I'm almost positive.
Cause they're separate.
The hypothetical bond schedules, the, the the first year's payments are typically always the same. So like.
Forty-seven.
So like, I'll read you theirs. To, to see if the school district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars gross budget for the solar project at Swayze Central School and to authorize the issuance of not more than eight hundred and fifty dollars, eight hundred, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars of bond or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act RSA thirty-three. And to authorize the municipal officials to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes to determine the rate of interest there. And further raise and appropriate an additional twenty-one, two fifty to meet the necessary financial obligations associated with the project's debt service for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty, sorry, twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five year. The Brentwood School Board and Municipal Budget Committee recommends this appropriation. And you have to have a three-fifths out vote required. So it, it doesn't say the duration of the bond.
Nor does it say what the bond rate is and what the total repayment is. It's just the amount that the bond is being taken out for, not the total amount that we're paying for.
Correct. And the reason for that is you won't get that until you actually go to bond.
Right. Cause these are, this is an estimated bond and you don't get the actual numbers until you go to bond.
Correct. And so they always typically provide conservative rates. Like they're not gonna tell me it's three percent. And they're like, oh, surprise, it's five. Like that.
And, and is that, is that a fixed rate over the life of the loan?
It looks like it is.
Right? Correct. Yes.
It's a fixed rate.
Molly, just looking at the examples that you gave us, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's fine.
Unlike, like if I were to take a car loan out, there's different rates depending on how long it is. These appear to be the same rate for the three, five, seven. Is that sort of how bonds are?
Yes, I think, I don't think that they really.
Vary.
They vary. Well, I guess I'd have to ask them, but.
You don't have to ask me, right?
Yeah. Like usually like either way it would go down the longer.
Right.
Right.
Longer you do it. Right.
Cause it seems better, but you're gonna pay more on the long.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. Um, I can ask them, but usually whenever I ask your debt schedules, they always have the same rate for like five different.
Right. I double checked your original numbers and that, just like you're saying there, they were all the exact same interest rate regardless of the length of.
Yeah, cause some people definitely felt going longer might be a better option as well.
You are gonna pay more over.
I know.
The duration of it.
I think they were worried about the
Jump.
The jump. The year, the yearly jump, which I get.
Yeah.
So that's something to consider as well. Cause yeah, I, I mean, obviously it's gonna make it go up, but.
I mean, I think they, when they do go to bond, they probably do have different rates for each year. Cause like you said, the longer you do it.
Right. Molly, the, the assessed valuation, does that get reassessed every year for the town or not for the bond?
I don't, or do you so? So you know how every few years you're like, oh crap.
Yeah, this past year.
Yeah, this past year.
So that's why it's very sensitive to.
Yeah. So, so, um, the assessed valuation is usually taken off the tax card and that's something prepared by the town. So there's with utilities and without utilities. I don't know why they have two different measurements, but they do. And that's determined by the town.
So for example, if this were to pass, it would be this year's.
Would this year's assessment carry through the remainder, the whole of, the whole term of the bond? Is that what you're asking?
Thank you. Yeah.
No. So what, so what's gonna hap, well, so what's gonna happen is they're gonna, they're going to tell you what your bond payments are, but then your tax impact, you, you're gonna raise a different amount each year based off of how, what the debt schedule repayment is. And the tax impact is gonna be what you raised that year and the assessed valuation on the tax card that year.
So if we get reassessed, which is coming up, it very much might not be the schedule. It would be whatever we would assess for moving forward based upon the schedule. So for example, if, let me give you the example. Let me know if I'm understanding and understanding this properly. If, for example, if we do a five year bond rate and my house is assessed at four hundred K, our second year would be X. And then all of a sudden, no, wait, my reassessment on a five hundred K house, it goes up by X amount for year three.
Yeah. So I mean, that would be, it's.
But we're not gonna pay the bank more money than.
No, 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 no.
That's fixed.
The, the amount you're paying the bank is fixed. How it impacts the individual taxpayers will be determining on the tax rate.
That's variable. That's, that's what's variable.
Yeah. So what, the, what, when we sign a debt schedule, that's like, I'm signing in blood or.
There's no blood, to be clear.
And that, and that's fixed. So for the next, like when we did the middle school, I knew for the next thirty years.
Yeah.
How much we're gonna pay. Now, how that impacts Jane Walsh versus Bobby versus Jenny.
Yeah.
Is gonna differ per year. And we wouldn't know until the tax rates come out.
Right.
But that is actually really helpful to know because we just had, there's five million dollar houses behind my house, which are, are adding into the, the piece. And then there's this question of more, you know, not that, but variables can change sort of how our tax base is.
Yes.
And so that's just helpful to know that
Yeah.
the payment won't go up for total, but it could individually.
But it could.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But the town pays, won't change, or with the school district pays, I should say. But, um, but what you as individual taxpayers would change based off of the tax rate on your individual.
Our taxes are never going down.
No.
That's fair.
That, and anybody being said.
So in terms of moving forward for the next meeting, the specific questions that you would like answers to are around the, you know, the contingency plan, in other words, can there be a contingency plan if the one point eight doesn't pass? Can, that's Bobby's question. Can there be a one point three, for example?
Or can there be? No, can there be, the second article would be to raise and appropriate money to.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Cause that would, why would you ever vote for the first one?
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay. That's.
Raise money to.
At one point you said a million. I wasn't sure where that, where.
To further investigate and spend up. And we would figure out what that would be. We would give them a number.
Got it. Okay.
Fifty thousand dollars.
And that's part of the other thing.
Thank you.
Is we want to know RFP costs.
Right.
Um, to go out, you know.
Yep.
And then a contract.
Construction manager.
Manager cost.
Estimates.
Yeah. So that we can come up with the second
Figure.
Figure. Right?
Yes.
Tell me if I'm wrong.
And if there's anybody in our SOU that has expertise in this, whether it's Chris, whether it's our building, you know, do we have a building person? You know, that knows this kind of stuff, is there sort of more wisdom potentially choosing one of those alternate options, RFP money versus actually, is it more valuable to have?
Yeah, what makes the most sense to put as our, our backup?
Thank you.
Question on the ballot, correct?
Yeah, Molly and I will consult with our colleagues.
Thank you. And then I would feel much more comfortable entertaining a vote. Do we vote on putting it? No, we're just sort of deciding to put something onto the.
Well, yeah, I mean, we'll vote in.
I mean, we'll vote in March, but.
I think you, I think you voted last year to move forward with the bond hearing.
We do do that, but.
Is how you.
So it's just the bond hearing. Yeah.
Just to move forward with that.
That was implied within that vote that the project was going forward to the next step, I think.
But the language.
December, meaning you'll kind of decide what you want to take to the public hearing.
Right.
Um, and then also with that, that meaning we would also need to decide what is with that.
The language.
In the bond hearing.
Right.
I would highly suggest before the December meeting, because I don't want it to appear that we're just doing this last minute. I don't.
No, I, I think we get this information in the next meeting.
It's done.
We.
And I'll be succinct with my policy updates.
Make a, a decision on what we're doing, right? Does that, does that make sense, Jean?
I mean, yeah, but I'll, I'll be super honest and I'd probably be surprised to vote through you. I'm really not. To me, this would be a red light, but you guys both have green light. So I am respectfully, you know, overruled and that's totally reasonable. Um, I think that it's a little it's very big right now. And I, I kind of want, and I hate to say this, more time, more, more. I kind of want to go with option B. You know, that's my general.
That's how you'll be voting.
That's how, no, let's not say that. Let's not.
I'm sorry.
But it's, it's, I, I'm with, with a lot of people who say, this is a really big number. And with the bond schedule, this is, this is quite a large project. And not that we shouldn't consider doing it. Maybe there's another way. Maybe it's appropriate, like the fire department did with the rig. Maybe it's appropriate it into a fund. Maybe it's something else. But right now, I don't know if this is, I am not sure this is the right way to go. However, I am overruled and I will respectfully, you know, work with you guys to make sure that this is the way that it is going to be best represented. Um, I'm not gonna be, uh, you know, I'm, just because if that's my opinion, doesn't mean that I'm gonna throw every single roadblock in there. I'll give you my respectful, you know, thoughts and feedback, but I'm not gonna be the, you're terrible people. It's, I, I think we should. My preference would be to appropriate this money and not go to bond and appropriate it as we go along to reduce the taxpayers' impact. But that's okay. We don't have to go with my opinion. I don't, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna hold grudges over anything like that. But so if we're looking for a red light, green light, mine's definitely a red light, but as a group, um, I'm assuming Jenny that you absolutely want to do a green light and Bobby, you're a green light. So let's just, I'll give you my constructive feedback and.
Especially with the, if you can, your, I would really appreciate your help and assistance on the wording.
Yeah. And I don't think that, I'll be, I'll be super honest and it, it's like, I don't think that the three of us are a misrepresentative of the town either. There are people that have concerns. So I'll just be the person that has concerns and I think that's reasonable. In something this big, I think that a constructive conversation is better than us moving forward blindly without any kind of.
Absolutely.
Feedback.
A hundred percent agree.
I mean, that's, you know, I'll be that voice. I'm happy to do that. And I know that we will all try to do what is best for the town. Um, and I will respect the board's wishes. So, but personally, I would not move forward with this, but we are moving forward with this. So we will move forward with this.
And we'll have to think about if the time comes with regards to the wording of the warrant article. We'll think about that. I can't recall if the warrant articles say that the board unanimously supports this or is that?
It's usually the way that you don't have to put that wording in there. If you do put that wording in it, you can say two to one, you can put the, what it is.
But we could decide as a board.
You don't have to. Oh, you don't have to.
Yeah, you can put however you want.
How have we, do you recall how Newfield has done it in the past?
So we typically write, like in the operating budget, we typically write the Newfield School Board and the Budget Advisory, if, if there's Budget Advisory that year, recommend the, the, um, whatever the.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Recommend this more article.
Usually put, they voted three zero.
Okay, that's helpful, okay.
That's what the select board does.
Okay.
But it is.
But you can word it however you want.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we can kind of cross that bridge as we, because who knows, in the next two months, we could get a bunch of different information and.
And we could be making all kinds of changes.
All kinds of changes.
We can win the lottery.
Oh, my God. That would be fantastic.
But the, I know, right? A very big, rich person's gonna leave us some money. Um, okay, so.
We'll get you some additional information.
Yep.
We're gonna get, we're gonna get these. And I'll get you some additional information.
Thank you.
For the next meeting. You're welcome.
Okay, um, new business, we already discussed, right? We don't have anything else?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, old business, safety, we already went through roof update.
Uh, I will say that the smell from the installation of the new roof is status quo. So it's not something that's significant or pervasive, it's expected. Um, and then the.
Quick question on that.
Yes.
Sorry, did you have any more? Because I'll wait.
Uh, yes, I was going to add that the, the scent from, you know, the original scent that resulted in us replacing that part of the roof, that that has, you know, it's dissipated, is it, is it absolutely gone? No, it's not gone. Um, but it has dissipated, and it's also status quo, remaining stable.
So it's not getting worse, it's not getting better?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so that's my question. Is there a possibility that as soon as we close the building up for winter, we come back and reassess this? And all of a sudden we go, it hasn't gotten worse, it hasn't gotten better, but now that winter's unopened because we've had an extraordinarily lovely fall, um, that all of a sudden it really isn't fixed?
It's a possibility.
Okay. And I won't go further than that, because that's a whole nother rattle.
Yes. Yes, it's, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it, but it is a possibility.
Okay.
And we keep an eye on it and.
Thank you.
Yep. You're welcome.
Yeah. I, I mean, I would assume that, but I didn't want to exclude that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Budget Advisory Committee, anybody?
Yes.
Said anything?
Yes.
Reached out?
James and Jim Lieberman.
Yeah, so Jim Lieberman is gonna join the Budget Advisory Committee. Hopefully Rachel will rejoin us. I have sent over kind of some wording to post to the site and to put out there for requests for additional people, because I'm more the merrier.
On social media.
On social media. Um, what I might do is I might also like see if the town hall can like post it as well and.
The post office.
Yeah, the post office.
We could ask Sue McKinnon to send an email out.
Oh, yeah, there you go. I would, I will do that. So I have the wording. Um, Ellen was, um, great enough to give me some, a couple of suggestions on what I put together. So I'll work on that, and I'll have hopefully a few more people for next time, because we wanna start the Budget Advisory Committee quite quickly, if I.
Yes, next month. I did email Jim, and I let him know of the date of the meeting for next month, and that that would be his first step. You're welcome.
Great. So we have two, but hopefully some more, cross your fingers. And if anybody, again, knows of anybody that could have interest, oh, please get in touch with Ellen.
Yes.
They have to be ta- members of the town, though.
They have to be town.
Residents.
Members of the town.
Not members of the town, but yes, they need to be residents, um, for it to work, but yes.
Guess we're still accepting new members.
Mm-hmm.
Um, okay, and then.
Okay, so.
Oh, no, sorry.
Do you have something else?
Well, I spread it, I look, I just noticed that.
I saw that too.
Next meeting.
Next meeting is not October second, today is October second.
I was like, wait a minute.
Our next meeting is November sixth.
And yes, I did need to discuss future meeting dates.
Okay.
That was all I had after that. Um, so our deliberative session date is on February sixth. It's a Thursday, not a Wednesday, because of the way that the other calendars shook out for.
Thank God, because I'll be on a plane on the fifth.
And whatnot. So I know I sent you guys the list of all the board meetings for NES in that, uh, Google Doc, so I will modify that list to incorporate this new date.
Wait, February sixth?
February sixth, it's a Thursday.
I, for some reason, I have that in my calendar.
I do too, because it's on the, it's on the Google Calendar, on the school.
Okay, so yeah, it was already updated there, but I'll update it in the last, on that document that I share with you folks, so that it's official. And then also I do have a request.
And it's, is it at six, our regular?
Yes.
It will be here.
Correct. And.
Well, will it be in there?
Right, we've typically had it in the bigger room.
Yeah, the multi-purpose room, it's usually in there.
We probably should.
Yeah.
We have a lot.
Didn't we have a concern last year with the sound?
It was terrible.
It's always terrible.
It's always terrible. Is there a bigger room?
Voices?
We could ask if there is room in the town hall for it.
I mean, this is pretty big. There's, there's twelve.
Is there a way to set up this room bigger?
Tables, right, we can move the cha- I think we could make it bigger and add more.
We can move this back. I mean, we don't need to be.
I think we could add more seating in here. I do recall that the.
Because the heater goes on and off, and it's so loud.
Back and that the, yeah, the, just, you're not able to hear very well.
I would like it here.
We keep it in here and we'll make, we'll make more space.
If we, if we, yeah, if we could make this room like accommodate more people, that would be lovely, because it is nice to have.
Tables out of here and you can get a whole nother four rooms in here.
Yeah, if we could just temporarily move some tables next door, maybe. And just move us up, up here.
These rooms, this one and that one are the same.
Yeah, they're the same.
So.
That's what I thought.
I am requesting to move our March meeting date, um, which is.
Okay.
Currently the fifth?
Yes, thank you, to a different, either earlier that week or maybe do it the twelfth, if we wanted to keep Wednesday. But, so that would allow me to go to the National Conference for, uh, School Administrators.
So, wait.
Voting is the eleventh, I have.
But I was just gonna say, voting's the eleventh. What is the, what do you, what are you proposing? Which day?
Moving it from the fifth, which is.
To earlier that week, if we could.
I cannot do Tuesday. Monday I could do.
I could do that, too.
Yeah, I can do Monday.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry for being.
No, you could.
No.
Well, if it goes to the next week, I'm out.
Oh, you're going with it. Well, that's voting.
No, I'll be done.
Well, the other question is, do we wanna move it after the election? It doesn't matter, I mean.
Well, this, if we can, yeah, it doesn't matter. It's up to you guys. I mean, I could see pros and cons to both. If you're the new person coming in, maybe you might want a little bit of time to get ready for the April meeting, rather than have a March meeting.
The third works for me, doesn't it work?
It works for me, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's do the third.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you very much for accommodating that. And I will, so once I send you the new meeting schedule, I will include that as well.
Can you also just make sure it gets changed on the Google Drive, for those of us who sync to the Google?
Yes.
Calendar?
Yes.